Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, November 30, 2021. I have a meeting announcement. Council will be meeting in a hybrid format until further notice. We encourage speakers to continue joining us virtually or in person. However, there will be a limited number of seating seats available in chambers. With that said, will the clerk please call the room?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
The Kraus. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for a Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
That allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is proclamations, and I have one from Councilwoman Gross to be presented.
You can just read it into the record.
Into the record, okay.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2256. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh recognizes Kathy Gamble for her astounding service to our youngest, most vulnerable pedestrians and children walking between home and school, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh proclaims Tuesday, November 30 of 2021 as Kathy Gamble Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve in a second.
No move.
All in favor? Did you want to say anything?
We're wishing Kathy well in her near retirement. She's almost retired and will retire soon, and she has brought joy to so many people in Lawrenceville over nearly 20 years, and we are sorry to see her go, but we're so lucky and blessed to have her as a neighbor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you to Kathy for her service, and thank you for recognizing her. And we have another proclamation from myself to be read into the record.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 2257. Now therefore be it resolved that I, William Peduda, Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, and the Council of the City of Pittsburgh, to hereby reemphasize our commitment back into enuing to implement programs in tracking progress towards our Zero Waste, SDG, and other food system sustainability goals, and furthermore declare December 2021 as a Second Annual Food Matters Month here in our most livable city. And this proclamation is joint sponsored with Council President Kelsmith and Mayor William Peduda.
Thank you. And can I have a motion to approve in a second?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the proclamation is approved, and I just want to thank Mayor for bringing this forward. And our next order of business is public comment. And let me just put my glasses on here. I'd like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And the first speaker I have registered is Dr. Ronald Miller. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronald Miller, Bell Silver and Lincoln, Nebraska. Dr. Ronald Miller, @DrRonlandMiller1, Twitter, Global Intelligence Society U.S., a national candidate 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. In the early 2000s, I secured memberships in the Genetic Society of America, the Linguistic Society of America. I favor No Chomsky's work and the Modern Language Association. They are connected. Genetics is a form of language. A concern of council is to intelligently inform Pittsburghers about threats to their lives, offering the best, clearest information using flexible, lean intelligence, HAT fact, not offering the worst opaque disinformation using brittle or blobby intelligence that's fat with an F. F-fat info intel on this pandemic. The vast majority of the serious COVID disease cases are from a virus. Vast majority is an imprecise, unscientific, stupid expression, something like saying that the vast majority of council speech is non-profane. PH-fat info intel, greater than 90% of individuals worldwide testing positive for COVID-19, they are infected with a variant of the severe acute respiratory syndrome, coronavirus II, at the nanometric level, whose protein spikes puncture lung cell walls and destroy lung tissue. Of more than 20 variants of interest, four are variants of concern from Group B, B117 Alpha, B1351 Beta, B16172 Delta, and now B11529 Omicron. The Omicron possesses a minimum of 32 mutations, 10 on the cell receptor spikes, only eight overall for Delta. The City of Pittsburgh government, mayor, and councillor of COVID-19 Info Intel 2021, in my view, was fat with an F. Probability of Peduda or Gani actions now on Omicron, I think, are less than 0.1 F-fat. Probability of this council being led by Kelsmith to ordinances or acts to deal with Omicron less than 0.1, but I urge you to change that. The City of Pittsburgh citizen RLM, that's myself, COVID-19 Info Intel 2021, I think, was closer to PH-fat through the Global Intelligence Information Network, which I founded, in public comment. In 2020 April, I urged the city government via public comment to block entry of individuals from China, Italy, the United Kingdom, and South Africa, and to procure the N95 masks, which we still need. 2021 November, I urge City Council to block entry from South Africa and to commit the city to the development of a genetically physiologically flexible vaccine for worldwide distribution that anticipates vectors of viral mutation.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. The next speaker is Ralph Williams. Ralph Williams.
Yes, good morning, City Council. It's great. It's great to be here. I'm here to speak on a reason today. I have three of them, if I can get them through. Not happy with the fact that this council, with everything that's going on in this city, that this council was worried about plastic bags at stores and businesses. Just another obstacle which businesses have enough of, and petty laws like this deter businesses from Pittsburgh. There are crimes in the streets, roads that need to be paved, cops that need a raise, and we're worried about plastic bags. Secondly, I want to talk about the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. I know, I don't know if this branch of office has anything to do with the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. The building I live in, we have security, and we also have safety issues. I would like to speak to Mr. Burgess, which I have left messages on his voicemail and have not gotten a return call. I know I don't live in your district, Mr. Burgess, but please give me a phone call. It's in regards to you being on the board, in regards to some issues with the Housing Authority, that I need to speak with you with because I can't get any satisfaction from anyone else. Also, I was looking for Mr. Kraus, which he's not here today. My next issue is I would like to talk about the deer problem in the city. I know the city has a deer problem. I've seen it myself. My suggestion today is that to control this, you have select weekends where you close down your parks, bait them, and have a coordinated shoot or bow and arrow. Get with the State Game Commission. They've done this in other boroughs and townships. And then you could take the meat from the deer that's shot and use it and give to the food banks, food distribution centers, and maybe even use it at the jail. That way, you could save some money on food expenses, even at the jail, if you coordinate with the county. Thank you for your time. It was great to speak here today.
Thank you. And just for the record, we are joined by all members of council. Joy Bronstein. Joy? Joy, if you're on, you need to unmute your mic. Joy from Clean Water Action. We'll move on to our next speaker, which is Naomi Mullen. Naomi. We'll come back to Joy, since she is online, but not getting on. We'll come back. Naomi Mullen.
Good morning.
Good morning, Naomi.
Hi, Teresa. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bonner. The Pennsylvania Constitution states, under political powers, that all power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. Where did public servants who have been elected get the idea that they are lording over us? How can they make decisions for our community that we have lived in and been property owners in for decades? The PPS Board and administration created a controversy against us. After repeated speeches to the Board and City Council, they have not dropped the sale of Bonner School. It is a crime to use a falsehood to vote, create a resolution, sign a sales agreement, transfer a property, or create a legal contract under misrepresentation. Officials have a duty to investigate and act against a crime when notified. It has this notification. There have now been three community meetings with Gregory Coyle. It is seven months of no community support from Bonner. We even gave him a petition with 250 signatures on it. We want the building torn down and a green space to take its place. Gregory is operating in bad faith, and the school district officials are harming we, the people of Bonner. This issue has united our neighborhood, regardless of political party or race. We have hundreds of signatures on our petitions to prove community support for a green space. Significant community concern has been expressed to the Board of Education and the City Council all these months since the announcement of the sales agreements for Bonner School. Perhaps there is a neighborhood busting plan afoot. Blockbusting is illegal. Is there any lobbying or unregistered lobbying taking place, or any special friends of politicians involved in this noncompliant sale? A senior neighborhood's extended family that's lived here for over 100 years told me something very wise. She said that there is going to be a revolution if this keeps up. A tax revolt is one possible consequence. Why pay for harm to be done? My sincere, consistent request is that City Council create a resolution to block zoning change and support a green space to replace Bonner School building. Do your part for the environment. Reduce urban heat. Reduce watershed to Route 51. Increase green space for all ages and stages. Let's make it wheelchair accessible. Tear down detrimental problem buildings, not safe, stable neighborhoods. You want to reduce watershed to Route 51, and this is your opportunity to help that need. Investigate fraudulent acts by PPS administration, board, and contractors. Oversight is needed to avoid bad actions like poor roundabout placement. Shady trees, not shady deals.
Thank you, Naomi. Have a good day. And our next speaker is Taylor Musel. Musel.
Good morning. My name is Taylor Musel, and I'm the Health Policy Manager at Women for a Healthy Environment and also a resident of Observatory Hill. And I'm thrilled today to have the opportunity to speak in favor of the Pittsburgh-led safety law, and would like to express my gratitude to council and the mayor's office for engaging with Get the Lead Out Pittsburgh for the last two and a half years about the urgent need to end lead poisoning in our city. Our discussions with you directly informed the comprehensive and Pittsburgh-tailor legislation in front of you this morning. Thank you to Councilmember O'Connor for hosting a post-agenda last fall about the impacts of lead and the promise of primary prevention policies, and thank you to all of council for committing through resolution last year as well to act on this issue through legislation. And thank you for the leadership of Councilmembers Strasburger, Gross, Wilson, and O'Connor, and your staff for fulfilling this legislative pronomess and dedicating many hours to crafting this final version. We also want to thank PLI Director Kinter and other city staff for lending your time to help develop the most protective and feasible ordinance we could. As you grapple with the likelihood of coexisting with COVID for the years to come, ensuring our homes are safe havens are the more important. And we thank you for recognizing this and allocating $2 million from ARP funds for this work. This ordinance will...
Thank you. And just for the record, we do have Joy on the line, but because you have an older version of Zoom, we need you to either call in or submit your comments to council via the city clerk in an email, and we'll get you that information. And... Or she can call in. Did she call in? Okay. Joy, then we'll go back to Joy. Joy, if you're on the phone.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. Great, thank you.
Oh, fantastic. Yeah, I'm not sure. I guess it was an older version of Zoom, and I apologize for that, but thank you very, very much for, Council, for having me today, and thank you, Madam President, for accommodating my technology issues. Along with some of my colleagues who have spoken repeatedly at many of your committee meetings and previously council meetings, we would like to extend gratitude from Clean Water Action to the council members who have worked so diligently over the last year-plus to get the Pittsburgh-led safety law in front of council. I am commenting today on behalf of City Council and as, or I'm sorry, on behalf of Clean Water Action, on behalf of myself as a mother and a resident of Squirrel Hill of the City of Pittsburgh, to encourage you to pass that ordinance today. It's really critical that it passes today, and implementation can begin then in 2022. We've seen this as the first step of helping protect Pittsburgh's children from lead poisoning. We acknowledge that there are other steps that need to take. My colleagues and I have reiterated what those steps are, and we will be here to help you all take those steps as needed to make sure that all demolitions are conducted in a lead-safe way, that all contractors get RRP training, which is provided for free thanks to a group of organizations that have worked really hard with you all to bring this ordinance to this point. And we know that there needs to be a funding source that's implemented so that regardless of the income of a property owner, it is possible to do the remediation work that'll keep children safe. I urge you, I can't urge you enough, to take action today to vote this in and then to immediately start working with us to take the next steps to make sure that all of Pittsburgh's children are safe from lead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience as we dealt with our technology issues. And Kevin Quisenberry?
Hi, good morning. My name is Kevin Quisenberry, and I'm the litigation director with the Community Justice Project, a nonprofit law firm of the Pennsylvania Legal Aid Network. I work here in our downtown Pittsburgh office, and my comments today are made on behalf of myself, my organization, and as a member of the Get the Lead Out Pittsburgh campaign. My comments focus on the Pittsburgh-led safety law, which is Bill Number 2021-2101. The Pittsburgh-led safety law is a great big step forward in the right direction, toward preventing lead poisoning by proactively addressing lead hazards before children become exposed to lead. We commend all of you on council for your work on this bill, and we urge you to enact the bill today. In addition, I want to highlight three follow-up steps that we urge you to take once the bill is enacted. First, please be ready to take additional steps to ensure that the lead hazard inspection requirement for rental dwellings is implemented in the next six months. As you know, that element of the bill remains tied to the city's anticipated rental registry program, and the legal challenge to the rental registry program is ongoing now before the Commonwealth Court. So we urge you to be prepared to amend the Pittsburgh-led safety law and decouple the lead inspection provision from the rental registry program if rental registry is not up and running within the next six months. Second, we urge you to go ahead and initiate the process under Section 503(c) of the Pennsylvania Construction Act to add a provision to the Pittsburgh-led safety law that would require privately conducted demolitions of buildings to comply with the lead safety requirements set forth in the bill for publicly conducted demolitions. The process of amending the ordinance under Section 503 of the Pennsylvania Construction Act is purely administrative, and we would gladly work with you through that process. Finally, we would urge you to evaluate the feasibility of providing financial assistance or incentives to help lower-income homeowners, landlords, and daycare providers to remediate lead hazards in their properties. Such incentives could include grants, loans, property tax incentives, income tax incentives, or a combination. We would ask that you commission a report on the feasibility of the various approaches, for instance, by the city's Department of Finance. In conclusion, thank you for your commitment to enact this important legislation and to move forward with steps to fully and effectively implement the intent of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Our next speaker is Anna Coleman.
Hi.
Good morning.
Hi, my name's Anna Coleman. I'm the environmental justice organizer at Pittsburgh United. First, I wanted to express my support for the lead ordinance. I coordinate our water campaign, and mitigating lead exposure is a large part of our work. The city's passing of this ordinance could mean so much to the advocacy my colleagues and I spend so much time on. It gives me optimism and hope to have the support of our city government behind this work. However, as others have stated, for this ordinance to be as effective as we need it to be, there are a few things that need to happen in the next six months. One, develop alternative methods to inspect rental properties if the city's proposed rental registry isn't enacted within the next six months. Two, to add regulations for lead safety and private demolitions. And finally, to create financial incentives for low-income property owners to perform the work to correct lead hazards. As others have already explained these in more detail, I'll keep my comments brief, but without these next steps, I fear the ordinance will not be as effective as it needs to be. But again, I commend council for taking up this task, and I look forward to the passing of the ordinance as an important first step towards a safer and more just city. Thank you.
Thank you, and have a good day. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address City Council? Anyone in the audience who'd like to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning, Howard.
Thank you. Good.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 2240, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into an amended corporation agreement with the Pittsburgh Park Conservancy with the intent of extending and expanding the term and scope of the existing agreement.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2241, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the CBD Signal Phase IV Project Construction Phase, Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $6,200,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost of $36,000. Further resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill Number 2242, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement with Larson Design Group for Costs Associated with the CBD Signal Phase III Project, Providing for the Payment Not to Exceed $713,409.74, an increase of $47,792.46. Bill Number 2243, Resolution Amending Resolution 519, entitled, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Windsor Avenue-Carnahan Road Intersection Project, Providing for the Payment Not to Exceed $325,000, an increase of $251,000 to increase the project's construction budget. The original agreement was authorized by Resolution 850 of 2017 to clarify municipal incurred and total project costs. Bill Number 2244, Resolution Providing for a Second Supplemental Agreement with Michael Baker for Contract Administration and Construction Inspection Service Costs Associated with the Small Grants Project Agreement, and Providing for the Payment Relating to Allegheny Circle Phase II Not to Exceed $190,663.05, a $50,577.63 increase from the previous agreement. Bill Number 2245, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement between the City and Air Cleaning Systems Incorporated for Design, Engineering, and Installation Services of Emergency Respond to Vehicle Exhaust Systems at Multiple Locations Throughout the City at a Cost Not to Exceed $654,272.40.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill?
Yeah, Madam President, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules of council on Bills 2244 and also 2245.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Those will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2246, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Corporation Agreement with the URA in an Amount Not to Exceed $175,000 to Support the Creation of Publicly Accessible Park Space as Part of the Fifth and Dinwiddie Redevelopment.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 2247, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with Big Picture Lab LLC for Video Production Services in an Amount Not to Exceed $10,000. Of the Total Costs, $8,000 will come from the HUD Trust Fund, and $2,000 will come from the Commission's Community Development Block Grant Funding.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2248, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into a License Agreement with Giant Eagle Inc. to Allow the Performance of Pre-Development Due Diligence Investigations and Site Inspections on Designated City Property in Order to Facilitate the Construction of a Get-Go Cafe and Market in the Homewood in Larimer Community.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. Councilman Lavelle for Councilman O'Connor. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2249, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Animal Friends and Humane Animal Rescue for Services Related to the City Spade and Neuter Program at a Cost Not to Exceed $140,000 over two years. Bill Number 2250, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City into a Commodities Agreement with Premier Safety for the Purchase of Protective Clothing for Firefighters on an As-Needed Basis.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Remove papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2251, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget, the 2020 CDBG Program, and the 2020-2025 Capital Improvement Program so as to Identify Specific Public Service Grant Projects in City Council District 9, and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement for Operation Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the Residents of the City. Bill Number 2252, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget, the 2021 CDBG Program, the 2021-2026 Capital Improvement Program so as to Identify Specific Public Service Grant Projects in City Council District 9, and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement for Operation Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation. Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on Behalf of the Residents of the City." Bill Number 2253, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Budget, 2021 CDBG Program, and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program So As to Identify Specific Public Service Grant Projects in Council District Seven and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement for Operations Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on Behalf of the Residents of the City." Bill Number 2254, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 832, authorizing the Mayor and Department of Permit Licenses and Inspections to Enter into an amended agreement with ATH Power Consulting Corporation to Provide Customer Service and Soft Skills Training to the Department's Staff. The amended agreement shall be in an Amount Not to Exceed $58,150.
Thank you. And for myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one ordinance. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 2255, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IV Public Places and Property and Title V Traffic in Article Five, Legislative Chapter 151, to Regulate Parking in City-On-Surface Lots, City Utilized Property in On-Street Parking Spaces Reserved for Paid Parking for City Employees.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to waive, make a motion to waive the rules on Bill 2255 so that it may appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee.
Thank you, Councilman. Motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you. Thank you all. We'll now move on to any unfinished businesses or any unfinished business before council. Seeing none, the next order of business is reports to committee for final action. And we'll begin with Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2233, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for November 22, 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1943, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Title I Administrative Article 11 Human Resources, Chapter 192 Pensions by Adding Subsection 192023 So As to Add Language to Allow for Elimination of the Social Security Offset for Municipal Employees. Bill Number 1986, Ordinance Amending the City Code of Title I Administrative Article 11 Human Resources, Chapter 192 Pensions. Definition, Section 19220, Municipal Benefit Plan Number Two, Establishment of Municipal Benefit Plan Number Two, Membership, Contributions by Members, Contribution by the City, Section 19226 Pension Allowance, and Section 19227 Death Benefits, and Adding a Section 19222A Membership in Municipal Benefit Plan Number Three, in Order to Remove the Social Security Offset for Certain Non-Union Members and to Fund the Removal of Offset. Bill Number 2059, Ordinance Amending the City Code So As to Extend the Life of the Parking Tax Asset and Make Related Changes to Efficuate That Extension. Bill Number 2167, Resolution Amending the Rules of Council Rule Four Standing Committee, Section Two and Rule Five Regular Meetings, Section One, to Provide for Certain Changes to the Order of Business in accordance with Applicable Law. Bill Number 2182, Resolution Authorizing an Agreement with Tidings and Rosenberg for Services Related to Disparity Studies for Disadvantaged Business Enterprises at a Cost Not to Exceed $26,200.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President?
Yes.
So first, we have an amendment by substitution for Bill 1986, a motion to amend by substitution.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion?
Very briefly, please. So just a quick question. I understand the importance of having to opt-in, if you will, to become part of the, take advantage of the social security offset. I'm just curious if there's a pathway created by which one opts in. So I'll work with Director Manuel to make certain that we understand that there is an avenue by which one opt-in, and then I'll work with her to, to, to compile a list of employees that would be eligible for the social security offsets so that they're notified that they have to opt-in by, I think we have a certain date, by February 18th of 2022.
Thank you.
And I'll report back to council.
Thank you, Councilman. Do we say all in favor?
Oh, we were on discussion.
I'm sorry. Did you roll call it?
Madam, Madam President?
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Just a moment. I also wanted to acknowledge some of the comments that we made when we discussed at Standing Committee, that we understand that there are still some employees left who aren't being accommodated under this ordinance or this, this change, and that we intend to continue to work on that, and we're working with law, and we're working with HR, and we're trying to figure out how to make sure that away the social security offset for all employees. And this is the first step.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? So I'm just going to add to that, yes, we are still working on it, and we've actually been meeting with the unions. Reverend Burgess has met with them. Councilwoman Lavelle's met with them. I've been talking with them, and this is the first step in order for them to also get, to be considered for something like this. Because if we don't have it in place, they can't, they don't have that leverage to bargain as much. So it's my understanding that this was a very important first step for them. So hopefully, they'll be included down the road, too. With that said, any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill's amended. No. Any discussion on the amended, I'm sorry, Councilman Lavelle? Anything else? You don't have another amendment?
I do.
You want to make that?
Yes. Motion to amend Bill 2059.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's amended. Any discussion on the amended, on the amended bills or the others? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of vote aye when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eyes eight, nose zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. Are finally passed, and I'm just going to take one second to thank Reverend Burgess for his tremendous work on this. I think a lot of employees don't realize how much you do behind the scenes, and this is one of those things that you really drove, you and Bill Urbannick and Councilman Lavelle, and you allowed the rest of us to come along. So I just want to thank you, and I think together, supporting it together made a big difference. I should have said that during the comments, but I didn't. I apologize. Our next order, I'm sorry, our next committee is Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services, Councilman Lavelle for Councilman O'Connor. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2234, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for November 22, 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2199, Resolution Recommending that the Department of Public Safety and the Bureau of Police participate in Movement Forward, Inc.'s program, One Congregation, One Precinct, Initiative, and National Faith and Blues Weekend.
Thank you. And you've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill's now ready for final passage. All in favor of final action, all in favor of the pastors, but aye when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. Please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, nose zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. Is finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Human Resources. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 2235, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for November 22 of 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2185, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI Conduct Article V Discrimination, Chapter 651 Findings and Policy, and Chapter 659 Unlawful Practices.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills, Councilman?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilwoman Strausberger, is it too late that I could ask to join as a sponsor on this?
No, please do.
Yeah. Thank you, Matt, please.
Thank you. Any other members? Bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of vote aye when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, nose zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. Is finally passed, and that, now we have Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2236, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for November 22 of 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2101, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Multiple Locations with Provisions Related to Lead Safety and Mitigation in Order to Reduce and Thereby Mitigate the Health Risk of Exposure of City Residents and Particularly Young Children to Lead Hazards. Bill Number 2186, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 642, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget, the 2021 CDBG Program, the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Adding $8,342,028 to Reflect the Allocation of Home ARP Funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement." Bill Number 2187, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647, entitled, "Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 CDBG Program, the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program So As to Identify Specific Public Service Grant Projects in City Council District Two and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement for Operation Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on Behalf of the Residents of the City." Bill Number 2188, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 840, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget, the 2020 CDBG Program, and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program So As to Identify Specific Public Service Grant Projects in City Council District Two and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement for Operation Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on Behalf of the Residents of the City." Bill Number 2189, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Urban League of Pittsburgh for the Implementation, Administration of the Housing Counseling Program and Related Costs in an Amount Not to Exceed $100,000.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President?
Councilman, Coghill?
I just wanted to make a comment on the lead safety bill. First, I want to commend the sponsors, Councilwoman Strausberger, and I had a good conversation last night. I know Councilman Wilson and Councilwoman Gross are very passionate about it, and I looked into it very carefully, and, you know, I find it to be very effective, and I think it's a really great first step. However, there is a flaw in it, I believe. I, I do believe that making general contractors take the eight-hour course is unnecessary at this point. If I look at the other components, I fully agree with them, the childcare places, making sure, you know, they're lead-free. City-owned buildings, making sure that what the water filtration is lead-free. Rental registry, it's perfect, you know, so, so how, I like many, many components of this bill, and I think they're going to be very effective. I would ask to take a deeper look at the proposal to make general contractors take an eight-hour course. When you look at the other components, they are directly impacted by, you know, lead safety. Making general contractors take that eight-hour course, I mean, if the argument is just for education, forcing them to take educational course in order to keep their license, that's one thing, but I don't think that would be effective as well. But the bill in general, for me, is way too important not to vote for today, but talking with Councilwoman Strausberger last night, and I'll talk with Councilwoman Gross and Wilson, I hope to make changes in that before we implement it, because I don't think it's the right thing to do. So with that, yeah, everything is great. Maybe we can put an incentive on it, or, you know, maybe they can sign up to have any property that they purchase inspected, but we all heard the old adage, time is money, and it's certainly true with contractors. I can attest to that. So, so that's my only problem with it. I will be voting for it today. I just hope we can make, you know, a positive change with that one aspect.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Councilwoman Strausberger?
Thank you, Madam President. I just really want to recognize that this is a momentous day. I mean, we've been working for two and a half years. Really, I want to say the advocates who, who we've heard from the last several weeks at council meetings have been working two and a half years, and the council sponsors and my council colleagues have been part of that journey, but they've really been the ones doing the yeoman's work, moving this forward. And it's, it's a huge bill. It's a really big first step. I also agree with the, the next steps that are necessary to fully bring this into, fully realize the benefits of it. And, you know, there were three next steps that were mentioned by some of the speakers today. I, I have a running list of about 10 next steps that we have to do to fully implement this and make sure that it goes into effect, because while this is a big, a big move forward today, I'm not going to be necessarily cheering until we, you know, the next step is to identify sources of lead through our rental registration program and searching for lead, or through a lead-safe demolition, before a child is diagnosed, before they get the diagnosis that they have lead poisoning, which is part of the intent of this bill, and then really until the number of children being diagnosed with lead poisoning is down to zero in the city. That's really going to be the day that we can cheer and, and raise a glass of toast. So I just really, I, I want to make sure that my, my comments are measured. This is a momentous step. This is a big step. There's been a ton of work done, lots of next steps. This is really where the work begins, and, you know, I look forward to continuing to work with Councilwoman Gross and Councilman Wilson and Councilman O'Connor and all council colleagues, with outgoing administration, with incoming administration, and with, you know, all the members of the Get the Lead Out Coalition, who I know will have their, their eye on, on the ball when it comes to, you know, actually succeeding and reducing this risk. So thank you to everyone, and let's continue the work.
Thank you. Any other members?
Oh, I'm sorry. And I actually meant to address Councilman Coghill's concern, and that is one of my next steps, is how do we figure out how to prevent what could be an unintended consequence of, say, general contractors just not renewing their licenses, because they don't want to go through this eight-hour course? We have to figure out a way to make it as easy as possible for general contractors to do this, whether it is splitting up an eight-hour course into segments, you know, a one-hour course here and there to be able to reach the requirement that is set by the EPA standard for RRP certification, whether it's, you know, getting people together on a day where the, where work wouldn't be occurring anyway, Saturday, a Sunday, or whatever it looks like, in addition to the, the cost being covered for the time being. How do we make it so that it becomes commonplace, part of, built into the cost of doing business, and that it's just something that is enhancing the work rather than taking away from it? So I really am serious about wanting to pursue that and making sure we're doing it right, and working with Councilman Coghill and his expertise in this area.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members?
Madam President, may I say a few words?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I also do wanted to give another round of thank yous to especially Get the Lead Out, Allegheny, and all of their member organizations. It's, it's a tough thing to do, to pull together and align all of your efforts and energies around an important issue like this, so I wanted to make sure that we thank them for all of their organizing efforts. It was a great coalition, and the policy research and advocacy that they did was invaluable, and this legislation would not have happened without their assistance. So a huge thank you there. And also to our Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, Sarah Kinter, and members of the Law Department, especially Anthony Bylin, I know, who did a lot of revisions on the bill. It was, really took a lot of effort, and of course, our staff and council, the council member staff, who put in hours after hour on Zoom over this last year or so. I wanted to make sure to thank everyone, and to let the public know how much time, energy... I wanted to make sure to thank everyone and to let the public know how much time, energy, and effort goes into shifting our policy when it's such a huge change, right? And so there was a lot of work and homework done to make sure that this does go into effect and that we can start in two thousand and twenty-two. Because as we have said before, but again, the goal is to prevent lead poisoning. We still have far too many children, especially children being poisoned by lead in the city of Pittsburgh. And our goal is to prevent that lead poisoning. So just again, acknowledging how much energy and effort has gone into the bill and that we will continue to push forward on this policy until we are preventing all that poisoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and Councilman Wilson.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make comment and to obviously support of the bill, you know, as a, as a co-sponsor of it. And just, I just want to take this moment to congratulate the, you know, Get the Lead Out Pittsburgh and then also Council, Councilperson Strasburger, Councilwoman Gross, Council, Councilman Corey O'Connor, and all of our staff for really putting the time in. You know, I just want to reiterate that comment as well. You know, I said last, at the last standing committee, this is one of the most important bills we've done this year, if not the last five years. Because this bill covers, you know, approximately about fifty thousand units once implemented that were, you know, built prior to nineteen seventy-eight, whenever lead was in the, in the paint. And I just think it's important to make that, that, that big clarification there that this bill, although there is a feature in there for, you know, water filters, this bill is focused on lead paint. I've had a lot of conversations with people about, about the bill and, you know, it's just unfortunate that some of this gets lost in translation of, you know, this isn't the lead water lines. This is lead for lead paint. And which is the, you know, the, the main cause of, of, of blood levels in, in children. And although this covers, you know, if you do a nice overlay of where there, where there are these properties and also where the, the, you know, the contamination is that's been found, you can see that. But what this, what this doesn't cover, what's also important to let people know is that if you live in an old home, which are most of the homes in Pittsburgh, and you want to just put, you know, a coat of paint on the wall or you want to put a coat of paint on, on the, the window seal, you know, around the window, be careful because most likely that paint could contain lead. So, you know, one of the, one of the aspects of this is to, for PLI to, you know, look into doing some sort of education program around what's not going to be covered in this. Because, I mean, even if we, I mean, it doesn't matter. I mean, there's a lot of stories out there of parents, you know, who just want to, you know, make the house look a little better. And then they just take a piece of sandpaper and they start sanding a little bit. And people are just, you know, it's just, it's just hard to hear that story afterwards if they have a couple of children or one child. And then they become, you know, basically they become affected by the lead that's in that old paint. I know that sounds very simple, but I just want to make that very clear and take this moment just to say that like, if you're going to touch paint in Pittsburgh, make sure you contact a professional to get it tested.
Thank you, Councilman. Those are really important words. Thank you. Any other members? Councilwoman Strasburger.
And I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of the council staff who worked on this. I have to give a special thanks to my Chief of Staff, Emily Yonan, who just did so much work and spent so many hours helping to keep this large coalition together and moving forward. So thanks to Emily on this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? I'm just going to add my comments is that, you know, I never thought years ago when the Women's Caucus first started talking about lead in the water, that it would evolve to some of this, to the degree it has now. And then to also now include lead and paint and finding out the real causes of some of the lead poisoning issues in children in this region. But, and I just really want to make sure that I acknowledge Councilwoman Strasburger. I think that people knew who they went to when they went to you about working on this bill and brought some of it to you because we all want to work with you because you're so great to work with. And, I mean, honestly, sometimes that we see some of these things, we might say, hold up or whatever. But because you have such a good rapport with working with council, I think some of these things passed, you know, quicker than maybe they would have. And so I would like to work with you all in the future on any amendments or any changes. And I think that, Councilman, one of the reasons I do want to vote for it today is because I don't hear too much from Tom Palmesina. But if you remember, Tom worked for PWA and he asked me, he was the acting director of PWA, even though I know this does not affect law, but he was the acting director of PWA and he said, who did this legislation? I said, Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilman Wilson, Councilman O'Connor, and Councilwoman Gross. He goes, it is really well written. It's just really a great piece of legislation. He's so quiet. So when he said something and gave his, his blessings to it, I thought, okay, I'm going to vote for it. And then now I hear Councilman Coghill, who I also respect with when it comes to contractors and working around Pittsburgh. So I'll make sure that we work with you on whatever changes or anyone who takes that up. But I do want to say thank you all for all your work. I think you're all so amazing and doing such really good things for the city. So thank you all to the whole group and your staff. With that said, the bills are now ready for final action. Any other comments? The bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the I when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Urban Recreation.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number twenty-two thirty-seven. Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for November twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number twenty-two oh five. Resolution, amending resolution number twenty-four authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a community partner access agreement with Voices Against Violence and the Pittsburgh contingency for use of the McKinley Community Recreation Center in order to provide recreational and community-focused activities. Said agreement shall be at no cost.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Saying none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the I when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. LaBelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes seven, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill number twenty-two thirty-eight. Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number twenty-one sixty-three. Resolution providing for the creation of the Technology Modernization Trust Fund and setting conditions for the deposit of revenue into and expenditures from the trust fund. Bill number twenty-one eighty-three. Ordinance supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title Four Public Places and Property, Article fourteen. Public buildings by creating a new chapter four eighty-nine, electric vehicle charging to ensure that new and renovated city-owned facilities are ready and capable of supporting the growing demand for electric vehicle charging. Bill number twenty-one eighty-four. Resolution authorizing the city to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with core business technologies or software equipment and services related to payment processing in a cash-sharing system for the Department of Finance. Total cost not to exceed two hundred thirty-four thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty cent over a three-year term with two option years.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Saying none, the bills are now ready for final passage. All in, final action, all in favor of the, favor of the passage of the I when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. LaBelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes seven, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And the last committee of the day is Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number twenty-two thirty-nine. Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number twenty-one eighty. Resolution adopting the plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the Fifth and Denwitty West Site Project, which will involve the development of one hundred and fifty-two one-bedroom and nineteen two-bedroom residential units as well as retail space. Site is located within Allegheny County in the third ward of the city. Bill number twenty-one eighty-one. Resolution adopting the plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the Fifth and Denwitty East Site Project, which will involve the renovation and expansion of an existing building to create commercial and retail space. The site is located within Allegheny County in the third ward of the city.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Saying none, the bills are now ready for final action, final action. All in favor of the passage of the I when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And we have some meeting announcements.
Madam President.
Councilman Kraus.
May I please enter my votes on the urban recreation and innovation performance and asset management?
So noted.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to do it. It's on, it's on here. Okay, and Councilman, Coghill, you have a small games chance?
Thank you.
For the care of veterans.
You want me to read it in its entirety?
Well, you can abbreviate it.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number twenty-two fifty-eight. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh hereby recognizes the Carrick Veterans Association to be a civic and/or service organization within the context of the Pennsylvania Small Games of Chance Act as amended.
Thank you. Any discussion, Councilman?
Oh, I just, I don't know if anybody's here with us today or not, but I just wanted to thank all of our veterans. You know, I have the utmost respect for anybody who has served either in time of war or not. So I just wanted to thank them personally.
Thank you, Councilman. I should approve. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved. And now I have some meeting announcements. Budget meetings will continue this afternoon at one-thirty with Commission on Human Relations, chaired by Councilman Kraus. The Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, which is chaired by the President, we're usually, but Councilman, you want, it will be chaired by Councilman Kraus. I don't know who made that decision, but I wish I would have had some conversation about it. And we have the Oakland Business Improvement District and the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, both chaired by Councilman LaBelle. Tomorrow, Wednesday, December first at ten a.m., council will hold their standing committees meeting. Speaker registration at nine a.m. Wednesday morning. Closes at nine a.m. Wednesday morning. To register, fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. Also tomorrow afternoon at one-thirty, council will hold budget meetings with the Department of Finance and, and the Department of Law, including the Ethics Board, both chaired by Councilman LaBelle. On Thursday, December second, budget meetings continue with the Department of Public Works at ten a.m., chaired by Councilman Coghill, and at one-thirty p.m. with the Parks Tax Trust Fund chaired by Councilman LaBelle, and then followed by the Parks and Recreation, which will be chaired by Councilman Burgess. All budget meetings will be streamed live. Is there anything for members? Councilman Burgess.
Yesterday, a few days ago, unfortunately, a young woman was shot and killed around the corner from my home. It reminded me of really the first homicide. Young boy in my church that was shot and killed. Grew up in my church. Parents were the leading members and brought him to church every Sunday. And so I, I, I've been thinking about gun violence and crime now twenty years. And so I do know some, and I really want us to talk about, the reason I'm saying this publicly is I think this is a decision, although I call for opposed to general, I think it's a decision we should do together. And I want to, I want, I want to ask members, although we don't have to discuss it now, but to kind of talk to me about it. I think as we move forward into a new administration and a Coghill and I have, Councilman Coghill and I have, have partnered and said that we would be partners in terms of reimagining police, that we would work together moving forward. I, I think, I'm not sure how to do it, what's the right way to do it? I think we need to have a review of where we're at now in terms of public safety. Where, where all the programs are and how they work and, and how they're put together because we're going to eventually start, more than eventually, soon we're going to be giving mini grants. And I think that even having talked to people, there's, there's lots of misunderstanding about the work. Sort of like church. In, in church, the research says that if you want a child to grow up and be a church member, send them to Sunday School for five to seven years. If you send a child to Sunday School for five to seven years, the likelihood is that child will grow up eventually and be a member of a church. It is the most single, most effective way for people to be entered into the church is to come in when they're young, right? That's what the research says. But it takes five to seven years of continuous engagement for that to work. The same thing kind of is true in terms of gun violence, not other crimes, but gun violence. You can do, you can put money into prevention programs, which we should do, important to do. But the after-school programs and the football programs, they take a prolonged period of time because the people who are doing the shooting are eighteen to thirty. And so you have to invest in these young people's lives, five, ten years of consistent investment. So when they get of age, they do not commit these, these terrible crimes. But at the same time, you have to do intervention to these eighteen to thirty-year-olds. They're a very specific population and they have to be targeted very specifically in order to stop the violence now. So prevention programs do what they say. They prevent programs, but they're going to be long-term. To stop the crime, to stop gun violence tomorrow and the day after, and the day after, you have to do targeted things. And we're doing that in the city. We're doing all those things. We're doing prevention. We're doing intervention and we're doing reimagining policing. And so I just think that we, I just think we need to have a conversation about what we're doing, what it looks like now, so that we'll have a foundation to talk about how it needs to be changed in the future. If that makes some sense. And I, I don't know the right, I don't know the right format to do it in, whether it's supposed to generate a council. I mean, I say the community meeting, but I think COVID, that may not make sense because of COVID. But I think we need to all come and say, okay, this is what we're doing now and present that in a public way. And then as we move forward, let's talk about what makes sense to do, to add on to this, to change it, to transform it moving forward. So that's, and that's a lot, that's something from my head. I don't have an answer. I just have a process. So that, I'm, I'm really interested in partnering with members to figure this out of how to move forward in this conversation.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess. Councilman Kraus.
I'd like to help, Councilman.
Yeah, let's.
I'd like to help.
All right, let's do it together.
I just wanted to make a brief comment on a gentleman that called in today that wanted to talk about the plastic bag legislation. I remember when we passed the CATD clause legislation, I got banged big time by a constituent that said, you know, with everything that's happening in this city, by a constituent that said, you know, with everything that's happening in this city, at least we know Kraus's cat won't get to claw it. And, you know, I wanted to respond. I didn't want to be flippant, but I wanted to respond that we can walk and chew gum at the same time, right? That there's always a multitude of issues that are before us. On any given day, at any given time, we're not only just focused on one thing, we're focused on a multitude of things. And it reminded me when this gentleman called in about the plastic bags that, you know, everything going on in this city, there's so much more important things you should be focused on. I would invite him and anybody that's, uh, watching just to Google Plastic Wars PBS and watch a documentary on PBS on how we are strangling this planet with single-use plastic containers. It is staggering to see what's happening. I can't get closer. I don't know. I can't get any closer than I am.
I think both mics.
To see what we are doing to this planet with, uh, single-use plastic containers, i- i- it will keep you up at night. And if it doesn't convince you that something has to happen, we have got to be more, um, respectful in how we treat this planet, which is ours to in- inhabit. And the fact that we can't legislate or do things beyond the power that we're granted by being council members makes us obligated to do what we can do within the power that we have as council members to do our part. Um, all politics is local, right? We have, we have power and purview within the city limits of Pittsburgh and we can stand up, do the right thing and say, we're going to do our part. That's a small piece of the giant puzzle to, to restrict the use of single-use plastic containers within the city of Pittsburgh. And it's not like it's being contested. We're actually having business join with us to say, it really is the right thing to do. We have to do this. So I, I, I would just invite him and, or anyone watching, just Google PBS Plastic Wars and be ready to, to, uh, experience the, uh, just the horror of what we're doing to this planet by single-use plastic containers.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
I wasn't going to say anything, but Councilman Kraus got me thinking. Yeah, I have the same reaction. I've, I, it's actually not the first time I've heard that, uh, sentiment. I've received several emails from people saying, well, why are you focusing on plastic bags? There's homelessness, there's poverty, there's gun violence, there's this, there, there will always be issues of the day that we have to tackle, we must tackle. I'm wholeheartedly in agreement with Councilman, uh, Reverend Burgess around the need to tackle gun violence in a holistic way. And I'd like to help too. There will always be issues of the day that we have to tackle. But there also is a responsibility for us as trustees to leave the next generation and the generation after that, and the generation that with a place that they can inhabit. And Plastic Wars, among many other, uh, documentaries, demonstrate just how tenuous that future is to the extent that generation, Gen Z right now, many of them are contemplating not having kids because they don't think our planet is going to be inhabitable by their children. It is a, it is a crisis and, um, and this is just one small step we can take to be able to, to be the stewards of our land and the stewards of this earth in the best way, the way that we possibly can. So, you know, I think it's a balance between tackling the issues that are facing us right now in this moment and thinking seven generations ahead as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? Councilman Coghill.
Well, I just also wanted to. Also wanted to comment, Councilman Kraus, uh, I did see that documentary and it had a large part of my signing on to the bill, I will say. So, um, so, and besides that, you know, plastic just takes up space. And, um, you know, great to eradicate that along with the lead. But, um, I really just wanted to comment on Reverend Burgess and his comments as to, uh, police reform. You know, I feel like we've had some really constructive meetings so far. Uh, I think it starts with respect for our police force and neighborhoods that are, we feel, you know, um, need police reform most. I think Reverend brings that to the table. Um, I look forward to bringing other members in as we get deeper into the talks and as to, uh, police reforms that we feel are going to be responsible and right for our city. Um, and I also look forward to the next administration. I think they should absolutely be in on all police reform talks. Um, you know, so, so with that, uh, you know, I look forward to our next meeting and, you know, we feel we're going to come up with something productive. Police reform can go through a wide variety of different tactics. But, um, you know, we're starting by talking and I think we're off to a great start. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? I'm just going to say I'd also like to work with Reverend Burgess. It's, it's an issue that you obviously know I do care about. And, um, I would definitely think that we need to bring the police to the table. But I think that the churches, um, are a good start. But I also have some concerns because I think sometimes the churches are the place where some of the kids selling drugs and doing crimes in the community, it's where they hide. They sometimes give money to the church, they turn a blind's eye, their family's good in the church, have good standing, they turn a blind's eye. So sometimes I think that the churches is, sometimes I think that some churches can contribute to some of the problems that we're having, maybe not intentionally, but unintentionally. But I do think that, that I would like to see more of that and, uh, more a way for us to work with them and show them how to help people and not just, um, it's almost like when you watch the movies back in the day with organized crime would give to the Catholic church and, you know, do things, you know, and, but yet they turn the, turn the other cheek, but, I mean, or turn, turn their eye, I would say, um, away from what was actually happening. And so I don't want to see that happen. What I want to see is us come up with some real solutions and ways that we can really empower people to help people. Um, and so for that, I would be really helpful. I, I would really be interested in helping. But I also think that our police, I, I mentioned this before, and I am working with the director and others to take a day for council to go on rides with the police to see what they're going through. And, um, as I mentioned, there are people in Sheridan who asked for you all to come there before you make decisions, before you do some things. Because oftentimes what my community hears is that the black community does not want the police. And in my black communities, they want the police. So when they hear a bunch of white kids on TV talking about how they want less police, it's offensive to them because they're living with a lot of, not everyone, but that a lot of the communities, um, are living with, you know, the, the lack of policing in their communities. There's not enough police officers right now. Our numbers are down really low. And yet we've all got, I think we're all, a lot of us were copying on an email today from Councilwoman Gross's district from somebody who's saying, you know, like, look, where are the police and how can I help? So I think that we ha- we have this all over the city where we hear these voices that are very public and very, um, active on social media. But what we're not hearing and not seeing is what my constituents want you to see and hear is what they're living with. And so, and how we can best address and help them truly, not just because we're doing whatever's a, a national trend or we're doing something that was as a social media trend, but we're actually delivering real results for the public to live in peace and safely. So with that said, anything else from members, Councilman?
Um, yeah, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll be brief. I just wanted to, uh, comment on, as you said, you know, um, intersecting the police and faith. Um, I fully support that and along with our new-minted bishop pair, I think he's going to play a, a key role in that. So, um, so, so, you know, and, and that's just one little thing that we took, we took out of a couple of our meetings that, uh, you know, we're complete in agreement with. I think our best leaders in the city of Pittsburgh, a lot of them come from our churches. So to have them involved and they're usually passionate about it as well, um, I think is a great start. So.
Thank you. Councilman Burgess, do you want to talk about your new position real briefly, so the public knows what we're talking about?
Um, yes, I'm, in our Baptist circle, um, we don't have bishops. We are connectional churches. And so we have a leader of, of, um, about a hundred and twenty-some Baptist churches. And I called the moderator and I was elected a few months ago to be its moderator. I have been thinking a lot because of that in terms of religious terms, you know? Martin Luther King said, there cannot be, there cannot be peace without justice and there cannot be justice without peace. Uh, one of the things is, and I, and this is, uh, and I think, Ms., Mr. Kraus for talking about this a little bit, that about this whole idea of getting rid of the police.
Yeah.
I res- I respect the protest and some of the anger I hear from young people. But anger, have someone who grew up angry, right? I grew up in a time of anger and fighting. I grew up that way. But it does not lead to progress. Anger alone does not lead to progress. Um, protesting alone does not lead to progress. You have to use these chaos moments, but you have to lead with compassion, forgiveness, love and respect. And for, you have to. It is the only way. And, 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 and more that I, that the longer that I, both this is my moment in time, I, I've said this privately to a lot of people and people are hearing me talk about my faith mu- publicly now more than I've ever done before because I am convinced, I am utterly convinced that only through this process of peace and reconciliation, of respect, of forgiveness, justice, those fundamental faith principles can we go anywhere as a city, go anywhere as a country. And, 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 um, um, I'm grateful to at least, I am not perfect. I can go point to those principles and say, this is what we all will attempt to, um, adhere to and hold up as our, our way of being. So, um, um, thank you for that. It is, it has been an interesting journey. Um, you, you, one was unexpected, but you know, life does have that, right? It have these interesting, uh, journeys in life. But thank you very much for this moment.
Thank you, Reverend. And with that said, um, is there anything else from members? Can we have a motion to excuse the, um, absent members, uh, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting? Move, two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.